I'll hand over to Rachel to do the housekeeping.
Thank you Chair. So in the event of the fire alarm sounding, please take instruction from staff and stewards and the assembly point is at Tudor Square. Please can I request everyone to switch their mobile devices to silent mode so as not to disturb the conduct of the meeting. The meeting today will be webcast and the recording will also be available for people to view later through the council's website. While ever the meeting is open to the public, photography, video and sound recording of the proceedings is permitted. However, the Chair has discretion to withdraw or suspend this permission, for example, if the recording is disrupting the conduct of the meeting or is being undertaken in a manner which could capture personal information, or in the event that a member of the public participated in meeting objects to being recorded. Thank you.
Mike. Do we have any apologies, Rachel?
We have got apologies from councillor Julie Grochard.
Thank you. No items moving from the press? No? Does any members have any declarations of interest?
Chair, for me, I think we all have a declaration of interest on item 10A as Sheffield City Council is the applicant for that item. Thank you.
Thanks Mike. That okay?
Yes Chair, as detailed in the report, the council is the applicant for that application. But as stated in the report, this committee is still able to make decisions as the local planning authority irrespective of that. Thank you.
Ask the members to introduce themselves. I'll introduce myself first. I'm Alan Woodcock, East Ecclesfield Ward, and I'm chairing today's meeting. Mike?
Good afternoon. I'm Mike Chaplin, councillor for Southie Ward. I'm joint chair and not chair in today's meeting.
Peter Price, Member for Shire Green Brightside.
Councillor Tony Downing, Member for Mossborough Ward.
Roger?
Roger Davidson, councillor for Ecclesall Ward.
Barbara Masters, councillor for Ecclesall Ward.
Cliff Woodcraft, councillor for Fullwood Ward.
Bernard Little, councillor for Walkie Ward.
Thank you. Right, minutes of a previous meeting which was held on the 18th of April. So I'll go through them pages at a time. Page one, page nine, 10. Can you read them? Thank you. Site visits, these will be put into members' diaries as required, which is usually on the Monday prior to the next meeting. Thank you. So we now move to today's agenda, which is the first object, Tree Preservation Order number 463, 22 Wheel Lane Granuside Sheffield. And I'll hand over to Vanessa, who's one?
Thank you. So Tree Preservation Order number 463 is for 22 Wheel Lane Granuside. It was made on the 2nd of December 22 to protect a sycamore tree which stands within the boundary wall of 22 Wheel Lane and a copy of the order with a map commencing at Appendix A. In September 22, the council's planning department was contacted by a member of the public requesting the tree be considered for protection. They stated that the tree, which is visually very prominent, was also of local significance and to substantiate that, they provided with their communication an historic map which indicates that a prominent tree stood in this location from 1850 onwards. You can see a copy of the map at Appendix D. Following from the removal of multiple other nearby trees, they feared that this tree, which is not located within a conservation area and therefore has no other form of protection, may be vulnerable to being removed and that the loss of the tree would be of detriment to the amenity of the area. In response, I inspected the tree on the 10th of October, conducted a tree evaluation method for preservation orders, or a TEMPO, which can be found at Appendix B, and the tree was scored with 12 points, which indicated that a TPO was defensible according to the TEMPO criteria. It was therefore deemed expedient in the interests of immunity to make an order. The tree is positioned within stone boundary wall, flanking a shared drive which links 22 and 24 Wheel Lane and a public highway. It's visible from a public vantage point, being one of only two large mature trees that stand on the southern side of Wheel Lane between the junction of Halifax Road and Creswick Lane. As such, it's a prominent part of the street scene and you can see some pictures of the tree and its position relative to the highway at Appendix C. The tree appears healthy, has no real notable outward defects. It has been heavily pruned in the past but has responded well. And although the overall form of the tree has been impaired, it still offers good amenity. The tree has an estimated 20 to 40 year retention span, meaning it will provide good amenity to the area for years to come. From an assessment of its size and appearance, it is unlikely that the tree is old enough to be the same tree indicated on the 1850 map. So the tree was not scored as having historical significance. But it is possible that the tree was planted as a replacement because it stands in the same location as the original. And when the farm that stood in this location was converted into recent dwellings, the sycamore was retained and enclosed within the stone boundary wall. So it's recognised that the tree is local significance and stands as a reminder of the area's rural past. With regards expediency, it's precautionary only. There was concern regarding removal of other trees which prompted the request. There have been no objections received and my recommendation would be that the order is confirmed. Thank you.
Thanks Vanessa. Members' questions? Mike?
Chair, it's not a question. I'm happy to move the recommendation. I think this tree absolutely should be protected. It's just that the inspection took place in October and we're now in May. I'm just wondering what other processes you've had to go through before this has arrived at planning committee?
Thank you. So the TPO has to be confirmed within six months, basically. So it is protected from the moment that the order is made, but it's a temporary form of protection. And usually, the reason why I don't bring it to committee earlier is because there's a backlog of other TPOs, so they all kind of wait their turn usually. So I try and sort of do it with, well, obviously do it within the six month timescale and leave a couple of months' wiggle room in case things get pushed back. So yeah.
Any more questions? We'll take it out. Mike? Yep. That's your unanimous, thank you. Item 8, Tree Preservation Order 464, Limpits Farm, Rusley Road, S7. Vanessa?
Thank you. So TPO 464, Limpits Farm, Rusley Road, it was made on the 8th of December 22 to protect a horse chestnut tree which stands in the curtilage of a stone-built period farmhouse known as Limpits Farm. Situated on Rusley Road, the house and tree are within the door conservation area, so they're protected to a limited extent by Section 211 of the Town and Country Planning Act and a copy of the order can be seen at Appendix A. The farm has been subject to both a pre-application and a full planning application and I believe that full planning consent was granted conditionally for renovations on the farm on the 9th of March 2023. The TPO came about because on the 2nd of November 22, we received a Section 211 notice giving notice of removal of the tree, stating damage to the adjacent stone wall as the reason. I inspected the tree on the 15th of November and conducted a TEMPO assessment and the tree was scored with 15 points, which indicated that a TPO was defensible. Having regards to this score, it was deemed expedient to make the tree subject to an order and a copy of the TEMPO assessment can be found at Appendix B. With regards to the tree itself, you can see some images of the tree at Appendix C. It's a mature horse chestnut of substantial girth. It sits in an elevated position to the north of the house, so it's really very visible and quite prominent on the street scene. It's not a tree that's without defect. It has evidence of a past infection with bleeding canker, which is a common disease of horse chestnut. While this can prove fatal, many trees are able to go into remissions and kind of carry on just fine. And in fact, this tree is only showing small signs of dysfunction within the canopy. It appears quite healthy, really. It has been historically pruned in a manner sometimes termed pallarding, also known as topping. And so the upper canopy has, in its past, I'd say over 20 years ago, been removed. And it's since regrown an upright vigorous canopy to become a tree of medium size and in fact is one of the larger trees on this section of Rusley Road. I would say the tree's an estimated retention span of about 20 years or more. Conflicts with adjacent structures such as the wall that it's stated as having knocked over can reduce the potential retention span of a tree. Obviously, sometimes trees need to be removed in order to make good the structure. However, there was insufficient evidence supplied at the time of the Section 21 notice to substantiate tree removal as a necessity. It is probable that root pressure has contributed to damage to the adjacent wall, but so has age and poor general condition of the wall. And in either case, there's no technical analysis of the wall to indicate that repair wouldn't be possible without the tree being retained in situ. With regards its contribution to the conservation area, it's a clearly old tree and its situation next to a historic building and a dry stone wall are really aesthetically pleasing. It's considered as being in keeping, I think, with the rural feel of the door conservation area. And certainly, we received four emails in response to the Section 211 notice objecting to removal of the tree, stating that it would diminish the amenity of the conservation area. So it's clearly got a bit of local support, this tree. There were no formal objections or representations made with regards to the TPO. Thank you.
Thanks Vanessa. Tony?
Yes, it's just a quick one. I'm looking at Appendix C where it's coming through the wall here. Is there any reparation from the council for that wall, for the damage to that wall, or is that the responsibility of the owners of the property? Thank you.
Yeah, I would have thought it would be the responsibility of the owners of the property, yeah, to make good the wall or to sort of provide evidence, really, if they couldn't make good the wall with the tree in situ, to provide some sort of evidence to state that. But yeah, it would be on the owners to do the work.
Thank you. Thank you Chair.
Bernard?
Yes, I know, looking at the photographs, the tree is gnarled and very beautiful in its way. What value do you give to sort of its habitat as wildlife haven when you give a TPO? Or is that outside the remit? In a free sex or something like that? Birds nesting?
It isn't outside the remit of the TPO and in fact, a tree's potential as habitat is something that would kind of score at additional points in the TEMPO assessment. It can't be habitat per se because obviously all trees provide habitat. It would usually be regarded as a tree that supported a particular species or something that was quite rare. Or sometimes it's because the tree itself is actually just really rare, you know, so it's, it itself is, you know, kind of deemed as important. I mean, with regards to this tree, it didn't appear to me when I did the inspection that it had many of the features that I thought would support bats, because that's something that I often quite look for, you know, think, could there be protected species within those? But the tree didn't kind of score any particular points on habitat alone in this indication, in this instance.
Thank you very much.
Peter?
Just quickly, it's difficult to tell from the pictures, the state of the highway, the pavement, which I assume is the council's responsibility. Is that, it's just covered in leaves? Or is there any damage on there?
I have to be honest, I can't remember. I can't remember.
If it was damaged, would that be responsible to highways or the point of the tree?
I believe it would be the responsibility of highways to make good the pavement. I think that they've got a set of criteria. It's usually regarding having kind of a, usually I think it's about a one inch proud ridge, isn't it, that could form a trip hazard? So there are various ways that pavement can be made good. I don't know if in that photo it's just a big pile of stone that's on the highway that's falling from the wall. Yeah.
No more questions, comments? Can we go to the vote please? Yep. I take that as, yep. Thank you. That's carried. Item nine on the agenda, Tree Preservation Order 465, Nine Clumber Road, Sheffield, S10, Three Ellie. Vanessa?
Thank you. This is the last one. TPO 465 for Nine Clumber Road. This was made on the 8th of December 22 to protect an oak tree which stands in the curtilage of Nine Clumber Road. It's situated in the Rammoor Conservation Area, so it's protected to a limited extent by Section 211 of the Town and Country Planning Act and a copy of the order with its map commencing at Appendix A. We, the council received a Section 211 notice on the 15th of November 22, giving notice of removal of the tree, stating concern that the tree would damage the adjacent wall and reporting issues of shade and potential limb failure over neighbouring land. I subsequently inspected the tree on the 15th of November. I conducted a TEMPO assessment and scored the tree with 17 points, which indicated that a TPO was defensible. It was therefore deemed expedient in the interests of immunity to make the tree subject to an order and you can see a copy of the TEMPO assessment at Appendix B. The tree's an early mature oak of medium canopy size. It sits in a prominent position relative to the highway and as such, it's an important element of the local street scene. You can see some pictures of the tree at Appendix C. The tree's in notably better condition than other adjacent trees, many of which are highway trees, meaning that if retained, it will offer an important source of amenity to the local area pending removal of other trees. There's no evidence that the tree poses a risk of branch failure to the neighbouring garden. And while the tree is really quite close to the, well, quite close to the newly constructed boundary wall, it isn't touching it. And there is no evidence of any current damage to the wall. And there is space for the tree to continue to grow without damaging the wall for some time. With regards retention span, it's an early mature tree of a species noted for longevity. It's a likely retention span of a minimum of 40 years, potentially longer. Conflict with the wall necessitating tree removal would impact on the tree's suitability for retention, but as I've stated, this has been considered. And although the tree is close to the wall, there is sufficient space for it to continue to grow. In addition, the wall has recently been rebuilt, meaning it's possible that roots have either been severed or bridged, which would further minimise the chance of root pressure on the wall. With regards contributions to conservation area, it's in the Rammoor Conservation Area and there's a statement of interest regarding the area that can be found at Appendix D. This states that private gardens make an important contribution to the character of the area. This primarily, I think, refers to the large formal gardens that can be found in Rammoor. So this sort of garden isn't really one of those. However, the noted lack of open public space in Rammoor means that privately owned trees do, are considered as contributing greatly to the local amenity. There were no objections received for this TPO either.
Thank you Vanessa. Any questions, comments? Can we go to the vote please? That's agreed. Thank you. Thank you Vanessa. We now move to applications of various acts and regulations. So we have one application today, which is item 10, planning application number 23/00493/OUT, former site of Castle Market, Exchange Street, Sheffield, S25TR. Michael?
Thank you Chair. My name's Mike Legelson. I'm the case officer for the application. There's a committee report before you that sets out a detailed assessment against relevant planning framework and other material considerations and recommends conditional approval of the planning application. The purpose of this verbal presentation is just to provide you with information on the site. The document proposal and to summarise the key issues. I'll also be referring to supplementary information before you which amends certain matters in the committee report, including amending far of the proposed planning conditions and inserting an additional condition. So the application is a hybrid planning application and that means that there's an outline element and a full element. So the full element is proposed in detail and that's the creation of a new public park. And the outline element is the proposal for far built five buildings on different development plots around the periphery of the site and with two within the park area. So first of all, I'll describe the site, then I'll describe the proposal and then I'll summarise the key issues. So you can see the site on this slide in front of you. It's the old site of the Castle Markets with Wengate on the left, Castle Gate to the north, which is the road that's recently been redeveloped to the Greater Green scheme. Exchange Street to the south, to the bottom, and Exchange Street again continuing to the right, to the east. The former Castle Markets were demolished in 2015 and since then, the site's been derelict and vacant. If you could move to the next slide please. So this is just an audient survey plan which shows the outline of the site as I've just described. So I'll just go through a sequence of photographs now that show the site, which many of you will be familiar with already. So this is the corner of Exchange Street and Wengate, looking across the site towards the Wicker area, which has been redeveloped more recently to the north. This is a picture looking down Wengate, which is a main bus corridor. So on the left of the slide, you'll see the Old Town Hall, which is a Grade 2 listed building, complete with clock tower in Sandstone. And then this is a picture that shows you Castle Gate in its current glory. Recently been redeveloped with the Greater Greens, you can see as a pedestrian and cycle friendly corridor, together with a sods treatment. These treatments are proposed to be carried through to the development proposals, as I'll describe. And then this is a picture from the corner of Castle Gate, at the other end, the north eastern edge corner of the site. Just looking back across it towards the city centre, you'll see the Old Town Hall, clock tower, just to the right of the picture. And then this is the end of Castle Gate, as it goes on up to Exchange Street. So you'll see in the, the buildings that you can see there are apartment buildings, I think they're let as student accommodation. And then this is a view of Exchange, of Exchange Street to the, to the top of the site, to the, to the south of the site. And the, you can see it's in two levels with a gallery on the upper level and the concrete structures you can see in the street. So it's been a pedestrianised area and it's been fitted with concrete structures to facilitate skating. And this is just another view up, up Exchange Street. Many of the units have acen on the left, however, there's at least three of them have been repurposed as night venues. And then this is a view of the confluence between the Sheaf and the Don. So the River Sheaf runs through the site, along the site's eastern boundary. It runs under much of the city centre in culvert, through what's, through what's known as the Megatron. And it reaches its confluence with the Don just, just north east of the site. And here you can see the two waters mixing with the grey water of the Sheaf, mixing with the browner water of the Don. And this is a view of the culverted section of the Sheaf running through the site. You can see the multi-storey car park in the background and this, this level area in front of you, part of that is the lid, culvert lid. And then this is a view looking down on the site from Exchange Street. So as you can see, the part of the site is formed by a raised plateau, kind of approximately four metres from, from the level of the rest of the site. And that's roughly in the location of the, of the old castle mott. Before, before the castle and before the Castle Markets and, and engineering businesses before that, the site was historically occupied by Sheffield Castle. And over time, the landform has changed. There are some above surface indications of that and one of them's the raised landform. And then this is looking from the, the previous vehicular access from Exchange Street back toward, back towards the site, looking towards Wengate. And you can see part of the retaining wall of, of the raised area. And then this is essentially the opposite view, looking from Wengate across, across the raised area obscuring the view. And then this view, oh, is from the, from the Castle Gate side again. Thank you. So that, hopefully that, that describes the site to you. I'll now just briefly go through the development plan context. So this is an extract from the Uniture Development Plan which shows the, the outline of the old Castle Markets on the site. So the, the blue area is the central shopping area, whereas the, the pink or lilac area is the, is a business area. So the predominance of the site is within the central shopping area, as shown on the Uniture Development Plan. However, that's been superseded by the core strategy. So this is the, the core strategy key diagram. So the site can be seen with a, with a green dot. So the, so in the, so the core strategy splits the city centre into quarters and then describes the, the land uses for the different quarters. And the relevant Castle Gate area, it describes as being a mixed use area involving offices, residential and hotel uses. And then this is a copy, an extract from the city centre strategic vision. So that's a master plan for the city centre, which is a material consideration, albeit not a development plan document. So I realise you can't see this very clearly, but the castle, the castle site is the, on the top right hand, blue area. So the city centre strategic vision essentially describes a city centre spine and sets out the aspiration of strengthening that spine and kind of building the city centre, rebuilding the city centre around it or rather revamping or improving the city centre. So the, there's a number of key projects to enable that. And one of them is the redevelopment of this site with a new public park and associated development. And just to provide some historical context, so this is a inferred floor plan of the, the old castle. There's various phases of castle that occupied the site between the 12th century and the 17th century when it, when it was demolished. But this is, this is the rough footprint. So as you can see, it correlates to some degree with the, the raised area on the site, but there are, there are a lot of differences too. And there are various elements of the, the castle which was destroyed by all Order of Parliament as it was a royalist stronghold. However, there are elements of the castle that, that remained beneath the site. And this is one of them. So this, this is the 1950s excavations for the, for the footings of the, of the Castle Market. And there's, there's gentlemen, you can see in the photo, a construction worker's digging out for foundations and the, the structure to their right is the, the old gatehouse for, for the castle. And this is what the Castle Market looked like. So the, the building in the foreground is, is an office tower, essentially a seven storey office tower. You can see the castle, well, you can see an element of the Castle Market that presented to Exchange Street just to the right. And then this is just a perspective aerial view, just showing the site in roughly its current condition. This is a couple of years ago now, so it doesn't show Castle Gate grey to green, but it's in a similar condition to what's shown there. So I'll now just move on to describing the development proposal. So this is the location plan, which has a red line, outline boundary that shows all of the land within the application. There's also green outlined areas. So the, the red line area is all of the application area, including the, the full application area. And the full application is to create a new public park and to also deculvert an element of the River Sheaf running through the site. The outlined elements, which is the green plots for the construction of new buildings. And there's also an outline plot that's to the far right, you might not be able to see this too clearly, that's the, the section of the River Sheaf that isn't to be deculverted, which is identified as an outline plot for future deculvetting. So essentially to bring those, to bring forward the buildings on the, the green lined areas and the future deculvetting, they need to be further reserved matters submission in the event this, this application is granted, providing full details of the buildings and the deculvetting works. granted, providing full details of the buildings and the deculveting works. So this is the concept diagram of the project. So essentially, this shows you the different parts of the site in terms of leisure, the historical interpretation and biodiversity elements. It also illustrates the part of the River Sheaf which would be deculveted. And then this is a cut-and-fill plan, so this just gives you an idea, you won't be able to see the detail, but this gives you an idea of the overall strategy for recontouring the site. So the first element of the proposal would be to remove those structures that were left following the demolition of the old Castle Market in 2015. There would then be an earthworks phase where essentially there would be some cut-and-fill and an element of fill brought onto the site to recontour the site into terraces and a softened landform to facilitate its use as a public park. So the green areas grading to darker greens are the areas of fill, and as you can see, they predominate the site, so those areas wouldn't be subject to excavation, although obviously there may be foundations or service runs in those areas, and the red areas are areas of cut. So they relate to the deculting of the River Sheaf, the terracing down to the Sheaf, and also the red area, the kind of middle-ish, middle bottom of the plan, if you can describe it like that, is that Castle Gatehouse area that I showed you the photo of, so the idea is that that will be exposed and celebrated as part of the public realm works. And this is the landscape plan, so this also shows you the detail of the works to form the public park. It also shows you the interim treatment for the outlined development plots, because obviously, in terms of the sequencing of things, it may well be that the full works to provide the public park come forward before the outlined development areas. So obviously there needs to be a treatment for those areas because they're currently just a spoiled land that's harded off. So what you can see before you is essentially the site laid hard and soft landscaped into a variety of different spaces that are designed to facilitate recreational use by the public. So one of the key elements of the development is to deliver a central spine access road from Castle Gate through to Wengate, so that's the relatively wide route you can see kind of curving up through the site. So essentially, most of the site levels were designed around the need to get a reasonable gradient for that access spine. And then the area to the right of the access spine is an area that they're describing as, the applicant's describing as the riverside park or Sheaf Fields Park, where there'd be a number of terraces down to a walkway that would overlook the part of the River Sheaf which would be deculted. So the deculting works would comprise removing the existing concrete lid from the culvert, lowering part of the wall, the part of the wall lowered by up to three metres, there's currently approximately five-metre level difference between site levels and the level of the Sheaf below. So essentially, they'd terrace down about three metres lower than current site levels, then there'd still be a two-metre drop down to the canalised but daylighted section of the River Sheaf, where there'd be a walkway and a balustrade for public appreciation of the river. The riverbed would be naturalised to some degree, although it would be left in a canalised channel. So there'd be, an existing weir would be partly removed, there would be gravel beds and boulders added for ecological improvement, and there would be a new fish pass which would enable water levels to be balanced, but there'd be V-notches cut in it, so essentially a series of walls with notches cut in that allow species to travel up the channel or down the channel. So that would be the deculting works, that would be subject to an environmental permit from the Environment Agency and also a detailed scheme. So that's the element to the right of the access road. To the bottom, to the south of it, is the area described to you as the gatehouse remains. So the idea there is that there would be an additional access down from Exchange Street, which would be a stepped access, then there would be essentially a terrace area that could be used for seating, then there'd be an excavated out area that reflects the old castle moat, and then there would be the exposed gatehouse remains and drawbridge pier and a bridge over that to allow you to link to the access spine. So the purpose of this area is to allow some connection with the old castle remains, some tangible connection with the Sheffield, people of Sheffield with the historic castle. So this is quite a key element of the scheme. So then to the left-hand side of the access spine, you can see kind of an oval area that's they're calling the bowling green, so that'd be a grassed area, kind of typical park grassed area for sitting or typical park-type uses. There would also be a terrace along the concrete retaining wall that's currently preserves the site levels from Castle Gate, so that would afford very good views over the Wicker area to the north, and could potentially be used for events or other informal recreation activities. And then you can also see the outlined development plots, which would have a temporary treatment of being soiled and seeded. So this is just a sectional drawing, again, because it's quite a long section, you will see the full detail, but it provides you an indication of the site levels, so from Wengate and Plot One across the kind of bowling green area, and then stepping down towards the River Sheaf on the right-hand side with the dropping levels shown. Thank you. This is an illustrative 3D model drawing, so the outlined development plots, the biggest of them, what they're calling Plot One on the Wengate frontage and Plot Two on the Exchange Street frontage, and there's also Plot Three, which is further back on the Exchange Street frontage. So these are kind of the white massive building forms, there's no detailing on them, these massing models essentially just represent the upper-scale parameters. So the applicant submitted a design code and a set of development parameters, which is common practice with an outline permission, is to control the scale parameters for the future development, but not to control the detail of what building would go on that, because that would be the subject of the reserve matters. So in the outline, you're essentially considering the principle of land use and whether the scale parameters proposed are acceptable. So you can see the Plot One on Wengate, which is the building opposing the Old Town Hall, is proposed to be, this proposed to be a fifteen-and-a-half-metre-wide access on Wengate down into the site, so eight-and-a-half metres of that would be the access to the public park ramping down, and then there'd be an additional seven metres which would be within the plot. So essentially, the developer would be able to provide a one-floor of the building which should be at site level, there up to Wengate Street level, and then not build above, so there'd be essentially a fifteen-and-a-half-metre gap, part of which would be made up with the public concourse and part of which would be made up with the plot above the basement. And then you can see the buildings proposed between five and six stories, with the five-storey elements set back two metres from the Eaves Line to the north and to the west. And then Plot Two is also proposed to be up to six stories, to effectively frame the new entrance into the public park, and then to step down to three stories opposite the Old Market Tavern and the Mudfords Building, which are buildings that would be retained on the site and outside the application area. And then Plot Three, again, a three-story building from street level, would be beyond that. And then this is another 3D model that just illustrates what I've described to you there in terms of the public park effectively being split into different components which are integrated as a whole. So the concept is that this park can provide multiple spaces for public enjoyment, a variety of reasons for people to visit, and would hopefully be a vibrant new part of the city centre. If you could go back to landscaping plan, please? Thank you. So I'm happy to answer any questions or any detail of the development scheme, but I'll just quickly run through the key elements and then I'll just run through the supplementary information as well. So the application is hybrid application, part outlined, part full, as I've described, the applicant is the council, but under Regulation Three and Regulation Four of the Ten Clutcher Plan General Regulations, the requirement is for councils to determine their own planning applications in the case of unitary authorities. So we have assessed the application in an objective and fair manner as we would for any other development proposal. So in terms of the planning assessment, so in terms of land use principle, the proposal is for the buildings to be potentially used for a range of purposes, which could be residential, commercial, retail, hotel uses, the full range of uses set out in the committee report. And then obviously, the other element of the proposal is the new public realm. So the Development Plan, Car Strategy Policy CS17 promotes the area for a mix of uses, including offices, housing, hotels and leisure. In this context, it's considered to be acceptable in principle to propose a flexible mix of uses for the development plots. Essentially, the Car Strategy seeks to consolidate the retail function to the car city centre area and allow more peripheral areas such as this to become a more vibrant mix of uses that are less reliant on retail. As such, this is considered to be an acceptable proposal. Car Strategy Policy CS48 also specifically proposes the development of a public open space on the site, and as I've described, the City Centre Strategic Vision also proposes the development of a public park on the site in terms of strengthening the northern extent of the spine. So in respect of all of those policies, the application is considered acceptable in principle in terms of both the outline and the full detailed elements. In terms of the detailed assessment, the environmental effects of the development and the site-specific impacts, this is set out in detail in the committee report, I'll just briefly go through a few of the main points. So heritage and design have been a key factor in the design and development scheme and its assessment. The site is particularly sensitive in terms of below-ground archaeology, as well as being surrounded by a number of Grade Two listed buildings. So the applicant has submitted a suite of documents that assessed below-ground archaeology and proposed a set of mitigations to minimise risks to that archaeology, including an archaeological assessment and a conservation mitigation strategy. Those documents have been assessed by South Yorkshire Archaeology and Historic England amongst others. So essentially, the proposal is designed to minimise impact on those parts of the archaeology which aren't proposed to be exposed whilst exposing in a safe and considered manner, the gatehouse area. There's yet to be a finalised version of the written scheme of investigation and the conservation mitigation strategy produced. However, South Yorkshire Archaeology Service have confirmed that the principles in those documents are correct, they just require some further detail. So as you'll see in the supplementary information, I propose some adjustments to the planning conditions in the committee report. The planning conditions in the original committee report reserved approval of written scheme of investigation, but approved the conservation mitigation strategy, which is essentially the document that says how the archaeology will be managed, i.e. by excavating certain areas through a set piece archaeological dig and having an archaeologist supervising works on other archaeological-sensitive areas. So the revised conditions propose reserving approval of that. If you look on page two of supplementary information, revised condition 15 would reserve approval of the conservation mitigation strategy rather than approving it, because South Yorkshire Archaeology Service have advised that there is some further detail required before they're satisfied that the document is complete. The revised condition 16 would essentially be similar to the committee report, there's been some reordering of conditions as well. So the way conditions would work would be, they'd require a written scheme of investigation and conservation mitigation strategy to be approved before any works could commence on site. Then they would allow works to progress, including the set piece archaeological excavation within the gatehouse area, and then the condition 16 would require full details of how the gatehouse area would be developed after that set piece archaeological excavation had taken place. And the rationale behind that is essentially, it's not possible to fully design that area until the set piece archaeological excavation has taken place and the archaeological horizon has been exposed. So in terms of above-ground heritage, the applicant during the assessment of the application has made certain revisions, so there have been a number of representations submitted on the application, which I'll summarise at the end of my verbal presentation, but one of them is essentially from the Friends of the Old Town Hall group raising concerns about how Plot One and Plot Two would affect that building in terms of dominance and overbearing. So to respond to that, the applicant amended the scheme to provide for the widened gap, which I described to you originally, the gap was just going to be eight-and-a-half metres in total, and also to set back the, provide the fifth celestial story potentially on the northern end of the building, but set it back two metres from the Eaves. So the revised scheme is considered to be acceptable in terms of impact on adjacent heritage assets, the level of harm is considered to be less than substantial, and officers recommend that the benefits of the proposal outweigh that limited harm which would be caused. So one of the other main objections to the application or comments on the application relate to the impact on the water course. So the proposal, as I've described, provides for the deculting of part of the water course and also sustainable urban drainage system in the site. The site isn't an area at risk of flooding, it's primarily flood zone one. So the objection essentially suggests that the scheme would be significantly improved by allowing access down to the River Sheaf and also fully deculting the water course, the extent of the water course within the site. So the officer assessment, so in considering this comment, you must apply the development plan policies and any other material considerations, so the relevant development plan policies are Car Strategy Policy 67, which encourages the removal of existing culveting, and Car Strategy Policy CS48, which states improvements will be made to the environment and accessibility of all rivers and riversides and the canal and canal sides, opening up culvated rivers and providing walkways where appropriate. So that's the way the application was assessed in the committee report, and essentially the view that officers have taken is that the works that are proposed in daylighting the Sheaf and also naturalising the riverbed, removing part of a weir and providing a fish pass, would fulfil those policies because it would take an opportunity to remove part of a culvating structure, and it would also improve the quality of the water course. To go further may well be a laudable aspiration, however, the purpose of the planning system is to assess the application before us, and that's more of a matter for the project team's stakeholder engagement rather than the assessment of the planning application. So the report before you assesses what works the water course and the drainage and flood risk impacts of the development, gets development plan policies and advises that in that the development would improve the quality of the water course, would daylight part of the River Sheaf and would naturalise the bed of the Sheaf, that the application is compliant with those relevant policies, including Policy CS67 and CS48. In terms of ecology, the proposal site, as you'll have seen, does not have a high ecological value currently, has a culvated water course and mainly remaining spoil and hard standings. The proposal should provide for substantial improvements in terms of biodiversity net gain. The prediction in the application is that there would be a gain of 19.96% of habitat units and also 176.3% in river habitat units. There is specific ecology issues with a roost of Darbentons bats within the culvert section, which is also, which is relevant to the deculting works, and our ecology unit has advised that before, if this project goes ahead and the two-thirds of the Sheaf are deculted, then further bat survey work would be required before taking a decision on whether the remaining third should or shouldn't be a decision on whether the remaining third should or shouldn't be decoverted, taking account of the Darbentons bat, potential Darbentons bat support that that part of the culvert may provide. There are also otters within the Sheffield River System. So essentially, the applicant has to further assess these elements before finalising the design of the decoverting scheme. However, subject to these protections, which are set out in the planning conditions, it's considered that the application is acceptable in biodiversity net gain and ecology terms. The report also assesses matters related to highways, air quality and other matters, I'm not going to go through those now as they're not key elements that I need to draw out. So overall, it's considered the proposed development is well-designed and will result in significant environmental improvement for the locality, bringing vacant land, which is a current detractor from the character of Castle Gate, into a good quality new public park to cover new commercial or residential or institutional developments. The effect of the development in regenerating Brownfield Site and potentially catalysing further improvements in a currently rundown area of the city has recorded significant weight. Potential adverse impacts of the development include upon heritage assets, below-ground archaeology and relevant environmental and human receptors have been carefully assessed and subject to a robust set of protections and mitigations are set out within the planning conditions recommended at the beginning of this report. It's considered that all impacts are tolerable and risks manageable in relation to relevant local and national planning policy test criteria, except for recommended that planning permission be granted, subject to listed conditions as modified by the supplementary information. So I'll just quickly run through that supplementary information. And also, I should have said at an earlier point in the presentation, I should have given you an indication of the number of representations, which is set out in the committee report, but would have flowed better in that order. So the number of representations received is forty-seven contributions, that's increasing one from those that are in the committee report. We had an additional representation submitted, which was from the, from the, a member of the Andalucy Community Centre, so they currently occupy the Mudfords Building. The committee report incorrectly states that those two buildings are unoccupied. I would correct page eighty-three to say that those buildings are occupied and they're occupied by the Andalucy Community Centre. The proposal wouldn't affect their occupancy of that building, neither the Market Tavern nor the Mudfords Building would be changed as part of the development proposal. So that's the additional representation. But of the other representations, five state their position to be in spite of the application, seven state their position to be in objection and thirty-five state essentially a neutral position, however they make commentary. And the issues are listed in the committee report and have addressed the key elements within the presentation I've just given. So the other points within the supplementary information are just a point of clarification on pages ninety-three and ninety-four of the committee report. Those pages describe the tilted balance that's set out in the presumption in favour of sustainability in the national planning policy framework. So essentially, as you're probably aware, the tilted balance essentially says that you should provide housing delivery more weight potentially than other considerations, although other considerations are not always naturally outweighed in the event that a local planning authority cannot demonstrate a five-year supply of deliverable housing sites. So in Sheffield, we cannot currently demonstrate a five-year supply of deliverable housing sites, the report advised that tilted balance was relevant. However, there's no guarantee that the development will in fact deliver housing because the relevant plots, plots one, two and three, could be occupied by a range of occupants, including housing, but there could potentially be other uses, including commercial, retail and leisure uses. Therefore, tilted balance does not in fact apply and you should apply the policy framework in the normal way, as is done in the report. So it's just essentially to pages ninety-three and ninety-four, it doesn't affect the assessment or conclusion in any other way. And then the additional planning conditions, as I've briefly described, would involve a, so we had some further feedback from our design team, which essentially welcomed the changes that are described in terms of widening the access and rejigging plot one, but they recommended a planning condition reserving approval of retaining walls on the site because I think there's been some concern raised in relation to the use of gabion baskets and particularly to make sure that baskets are filled with appropriate natural stern and face picked rather than filled with rubble, which I'm sure would be the case anyway. But there's a specific condition, there is a reserving approval of retaining walls proposed, that'll be an additional condition. And then conditions five, fourteen, fifteen and sixteen will be revised in the way that I've described to you. And that's essentially to reserve approval of the conservation mitigation strategy rather than to approve it. So before the applicant could start work, they would have to gain approval for both a written scheme of investigation and a conservation mitigation strategy. So other than that, the recommendation has put her apart to grant planning permission subject to the recommended conditions. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael, for that very comprehensive report. We have three speakers against, and the first one is Viv Tom. So if you'd like to come to the front desk, please. And if you press the red, you press the button to the right, you've got five minutes.
As a trustee of the Sheaf and Portons River Group, I trust, I, we welcome the council's overall proposal for the Castle site and have championed many of its good features, but we are disappointed that the current application only shows around sixty per cent of the sheaf decoverted. We question this, but we are willing to accept the council's commitment to completing this element when funding bids are successful. However, we, along with the Environment Agency, Sheffield Wildlife Trust and over fifty other objectors, feel passionately that the treatment of the uncovered sheaf, while it may be compliant, fails to seize the opportunity to be truly transformative and to address urgent national, local and international policy objectives. Sheffield is a city whose name derives from the river sheaf, which is largely invisible as it flows underground through culverts and is inaccessible and hidden in deep channels. If it matters for communities to feel connection with the place where they live, with their heritage, in Sheffield, our rivers and this river is a unique part of that. And being able to actually see it, to walk by the river sheaf and possibly get in it is something we should be encouraging, but the present proposal for this site makes this impossible. Under new regulations, it's now a firm requirement to maximise biodiversity net gain. One of the most effective ways to restore biodiversity is to repair our grossly abused urban rivers. The provision of a fish passage here makes a welcome start, but without a bolder approach, the river will remain a hostile, concrete-sided channel. It's also a requirement of existing council policies and the European Water Framework Directive. And the Environment Agency's submission on the application strongly recommends that the proposed development is used as an opportunity to deliver enhancements in line with the Water Framework Directive objectives. The proposals submitted indicate that the existing river wall will be retained on the riverbank and I quote, "We feel", this is the Environment Agency, "that this is a significant missed opportunity. Where possible, we'd strongly recommend that the site layout is altered to incorporate a more natural, re-graded riverbank profile. One option would be to create a stepped profile as part of the public amenity space that allowed for inundation during peak flow events. And having a re-graded engineered riverbank profile would provide greater opportunity for more diverse, in-channel, marginal and riparian habitat, including vegetation, whilst also providing greater opportunity for the public to connect with the river." The officer's report does not record this very clear recommendation from the Statutory River Authority, a part-funder of the scheme. The current proposal proposes, prioritises a level space, a level event space high above the river, over maximising access, amenity, safety and wellbeing benefits. Yet consistent public support for full access to the river has featured in every public consultation return, whilst current operators such as the Pollen Market and the Exchange Street Collective have confirmed to us that the event space is already well catered for, both on Castle Gate and in the large proposed Bowling Green space. Sheffield's rivers are extremely popular venues for a number of different paddling experiences with increasing numbers of paddlers and a high demand for more places, such as the River Don and larger tributaries. The proposed layout of the park will allow neither visibility nor public access to the river at Sheaf Field, a place where Sheffield was born. It risks becoming a major disappointment and sets some terrible precedent for other developments along our rivers. I refer you to this picture here, the current proposal, there's a concrete wall with a two to three metre sheer drop to the water topped by a safety railing. This means no access to the river for fishing, kayaking, maintenance, safety or wellbeing. In addition, because of this, for most users, the water will not be visible. Our engineers have devised an alternative profile which resolves these missing elements with a gentle terrace slope down to the water level, allowing both access and visibility for all, including wheelchair users, as shown in drawings two, three and four. There is currently no public access anywhere along the river sheaf, except in the privileged south-west, in Milhouses Park and in the Totley Woods. Here is a chance to demonstrate real environmental levelling up. Examples of how this has been done successfully are shown at five, Matilda Street.
You've timed it up now, thank you, Viv.
And please insist that the officers rethink this element of the scheme.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Anthony, please. Again, five minutes, please, Anthony.
I'd mind me sitting, just put my leg behind the cammy. I'm a Castle Gate resident that lives within sight of the proposed development. I come from a background in engineering and am also one of the lead professional guides for the Hidden Rivers Tours of the Sheaf Culverts. The tours start at the popular Matilda Street Pocket Park on the Porter and finish in the Megatron Culvert under Castle Gate. I have therefore spent many, many hours in the space proposed for decoverting and even helped council officers, the fire department's swift water rescue team, the ecologists and the council's contracted engineers, Arabs, with regards to this space. I also have several years of experience working with Sheffield's river stewards to manage and clean up local rivers and have various associated qualifications. Whilst warmly welcoming much of what the council team is proposing on the wider side, I'm convinced they fall sadly short in respect of the river for biodiversity, public enjoyment, maintenance and public safety. It has been claimed without evidence or qualification that retaining a high wall and railing is a safety feature, discouraging casual access to the culverts. However, it is the opposite as people can and do already access these culverts from upstream. And in reality, the most dangerous thing about the sheaf culverts is precisely that there is no safe way out of them downstream of the train station. A lowered bank at the Castle site will remove that hazard and massively help in facilitating rescue. Casual access can be discouraged by retaining deeper water in the mouth of the Megatron Culvert. Maintaining the deep water would also help to maintain viability for fish passage in areas that the current plans may render unviable. The depth of water in the channel in the Megatron and the culverts upstream will be reduced by approximately half a metre under the current plans. A more prudent approach would be to maintain the current low water flow levels upstream of the works unless it can be shown that there is no detrimental impact. The sheaf was the primary focal point of the Luft bid and should be one of the main showpieces of the new park. It should be easily accessible and be visible from as much of the park as possible. Under current proposals, the sheaf will remain largely closed in by the high retaining walls and not visible from almost any of the park, leading it to not be classifiable as a blue space and to the loss of the majority of its potential benefits. The government defines blue spaces as outdoor environments, either natural or man-made, that prominently feature water accessible to people. It will also need regular management of litter, invasive species and obstructions. Under health and safety regulations, this will be hugely complicated, both for professionals and volunteers, if access has to be by ladders rather than a low soft bank. This will substantially increase the ongoing maintenance costs and potentially preclude volunteers from being able to help at all in maintaining the river. Very importantly, a large number of studies have demonstrated the enormous benefits in physical and mental health through regular access to blue spaces. And in this post-COVID era, it seems outrageous not to take advantage of this opportunity to create a better green and blue space for the residents of this end of Sheffield who are woefully under catered for. The October twenty twenty government review of the social benefits of blue spaces evidenced this and also found that blue space is associated with appreciating surroundings, longer visits, improvement of mood and feelings of restoration to a greater degree even than green space. We have put forward an alternative design, which you have before you, which would allow day-to-day access and enjoyment of the water's edge by wildlife and people, including wheelchair users. We believe this is vastly superior to just another hard surface event space in an area that already pates as well to events. Sheffield rightly wishes to promote itself as the outdoor city and what better demonstration of that than to dramatically transform an inner-city wasteland into a naturalised river open for kayaking, fishing and enjoyment of nature. Along with the EA and many others, I believe the decision to omit thirty per cent of the decoverting from the planning application is illogical and will add significant cost. Whilst I note the council's commitment to bring this element forward when funding allows, I would like to strengthen that commitment to help avoid a tragic mistake in which a development takes place on plot three that then precedes the completion of the decoverting of the river. As such, I'm requesting an additional, simple but very important condition, which is that no development of the adjoining development plot three between the Andalucy...
Thank you, Anthony.
Four minutes thirty-nine.
Next speaker, Simon, please.
Thank you, Chair. My name is Simon Ogden, I'm a town planner, former head of city regeneration for the council with thirty years plus experience in creating successful public spaces, including Five Ways Walk, Peace Gardens, Devonshire Green, South Street Amphitheatre, Greater Green and the Nursery Street and Matilda Street Riverside Parks. And also the convener of the council's Waterways Strategy Group and a trustee of the Sheaf and Porter Rivers Trust, an organisation with two thousand supporters and a registered charity. I'd like to congratulate the council's design team on the many excellent features of the proposed new park. However, I would like them to use the same skill and imagination to truly unlock the river sheaf as the accessible, visible, naturalised focus of the new Sheaf Field. We are aware that there is a current deadline on spending or levelling up funding by March twenty twenty-four. Realistically, we all know that this is already unachievable. Councils across the UK are facing the same challenge and it is inevitable that these dates will generally have to be relaxed. Still, we fully appreciate that there is an urgency to getting the overall project out to tender and achieving planning permission to allow that negotiation to happen is a key step. So, we are not asking for the application to be refused or unduly held up. We are simply asking that the committee give the design team a strong steer to revisit the treatment of the riverside. The officer's report makes clear that there are still many unknowns around this part of the design, including a structural assessment of the decaying culvert walls, which may mean that they don't stand up, then approval of details by the Environment Agency, whose strong advice you have already heard, then submission of a scheme of investigation of the archaeology and according to the latest documents you've only just seen this afternoon, also a water environment assessment, which I'd be interested in an explanation of what that entails. Then tender prices will come in for the various construction elements and critically, the possibility of additional funding from Section 106, EA Local Levy, South Yorkshire Combined Authority and other sources may come into play. Only at this point will the scheme actually be finalised. For this reason, details of the landscaping, level changes and retaining structures are all reserved matters and will only be approved in detail over the coming months as that information that I just mentioned is assembled. This means there is further time and scope to achieve the outcome, which is almost all consultees have demanded. This has been acknowledged in a recent constructive meeting between senior officers and representatives of the trust and Friends of the Castle. To this end, the Sheaf and Porter Trust has engaged two very experienced ex-city council civil engineers to draw up the alternative proposals which will deliver those outcomes, extracts from which you have before you. This has been shared with the council team and we've not really raised any technical reasons why it could not be constructed. Officers may well have advised you that these proposals are all very well, but beyond the limits of the available funding. We would respond by quoting the council's own project description, which can be found on the website and which states, "Importantly, the council project is specifically and exclusively for the decoverting of the river sheaf and is associat- for the deculverting of the River Sheaf and its associated public realm and landscaping, including preservation and interpretation of archaeology. We believe that there has been a significant scope creep on the project for reasons too complicated and irrelevant to planning to go here, but which needs to be corrected by a more transparent and collaborative governance, something Castle Gate Partners have been demanding for nine months. This needs to be put right urgently, not by this committee but within the council. There is also a strong likelihood of underspend on at least one other component of the programme, the S1 Arts Project, which currently shows no sign whatsoever of progressing in the form submitted. In the spirit of the more listening and collaborative council which we have recently been promised, we ask the committee to instruct the applicants to fully engage with the environment agency and other expert stakeholders to revisit the Sheaf Field details as part of the reserve matters submission. We believe that this can turn the Sheaf Field into the truly popular and sustainable public space which Castle Gate and the River Sheaf and Sheffield deserves. We would also ask the committee to robustly hold offices to their commitment to complete full deculverting adjacent to plot three, as also requested by the EA, and by the addition of the conditions suggested by my colleague Anthony Wood. Thank you Chair.
Thank you, Simon. I now have a speaker for the application, which is Dylan Lewis Cresser. No? No, thank you. Members? Sorry, no. Officers, would you like to respond?
I think, I don't disagree with much of what was said, but I'd just bring committee members back, minds back to the job that they're here to do today, which is assess the planning application against the development plan and any other relevant material considerations. So that assessment is provided in the committee report. I don't disagree in any regard in terms of that there may be better ways to do the project or there may not. I'm sure there are arguments for and against the alternative proposals that have been tabled before you. Obviously you've only got one side of that, but the essential point is whether the development scheme as proposed is compliant with the relevant policies or not, and that's what is assessed in the report. And that's the decision that that is the way that the decision of the committee should be channeled. And just to remind members, the relevant conditions, the most relevant policies, a policy CS67, which encourages a removal of existing culverting, and policy CS48, which names the site as a new public open space and says improvements will be made to the environment and accessibility of all rivers and riversides and the canal and canal sides, opening up culverted rivers and providing walkways where appropriate. So the consideration is whether the scheme submitted passes that, not whether there is potentially an alternative development scheme that could go further on those matters.
Thank you, Michael. Members' questions, the first I have.
Thank you. Since I put my hand up, a lot of the questions have been answered. And I mean, the problem as stated is that this is an outline plan and we have to look at what we've got in front of us, not what an alternative might be. But if an alternative plan were to come forward, would that drastically alter the problems of finance? For example, the proposal that was put forward about having a level where people could actually get into the water?
If I may, Chair, there's a representative from the applicant team, Amber Brier here, who, if you wish, could...
Well... I've got Dylan down to speak. Knock yourself.
Dylan, just want to ask a question.
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, that's why I didn't realise. If you want to go up and speak, yeah. Again, you've got five minutes.
I'm just here to answer the question, not as a speaker, yeah? Okay, so would it alter the finances of the delivery? I think as Simon and some of the other representatives alluded to, we had a really productive meeting on Friday of last week where we talked very much about the further lowering of the side of the River Sheaf to give further access. What we said is there's three clear parameters that we need to bring to the table to resolve and come up with a final solution. The first one of that is looking at all of the design parameters. So all of the issues around, well not issues, but kind of promotion of wellbeing etcetera is fully accepted. We want to look at security and wellbeing of creating a well within the site that could potentially be hidden. So that was one of our key reasons for not lowering the edge of the site, getting lighting schemes in there, so the full design parameters. The second one is we've not managed to undertake the full surveys, I think the BAT surveys was mentioned, but we still need to carry out the full intrusive surveys of the culvert to then understand structurally exactly what needs to happen to carry out the deculverting and also lowering the sides. And then the third aspect of that is getting out to tender. We've had tender returns back up to 200% of what the original cost plan has been, even with decent contingencies embedded. And it's only really when we've got all those three bits in place that we will know fully what is deliverable within that area. We've agreed with the stakeholder team that we will continue to look at the design elements even before we get the full surveys back and the tender return and therefore the financial analysis. So hopefully that answers your question, yeah?
Next up is Tony. Pete.
Yeah, thanks Chair. I know we're here to consider what is on the application. However, I do have some sympathy with the objectives in this regard. I do think that it would be good if this could be achieved, but I mean, I don't know if that can be achieved or whether it's, or the financial implications of that. Thank you Chair.
I think it's the same answer really, back, that those three aspects to really address, and the first one is looking at all the design parameters, then it's the surveys and then it's the full financial implication. And once we've managed to get all of that together, then it will deliver that final solution.
Thank you Chair.
Pete?
Yeah, I didn't think we were here to consider finance, not we were here to consider the planning. And I agree with Tony. What are we agreeing to today? Because I thought it was... Because outline plan, but are we agreeing to a two to three metre retaining wall or is that up for debate? It seems to me it would create far more trouble that and not, because you're going to have to fence it to stop people falling over it. It just seems to me that if we've got to get this right at the beginning, this is a centrepiece in Sheffield, it's going to be everybody's eyes on it. And I just think that if it can possible to slow that down, as has been said by the speakers, it'll be tremendous beneficial, I think, to the whole plan, which I fully support. And I don't know whether if I agree to this as being asked, I agree to the bloody wall or am I, is that going to be allowed to be flexible at some stage where the alternatives can be considered that's been suggested? It's not changing the plan, we've done many plans. Can this be done to improve the application? That's what we're doing. Can this be done to improve the application? That's all I'm saying. I just think if can, I agree with Tony, it'll enhance the whole project and make it more attractive to the citizens of Sheffield. Regarding the culverting, deculverting, I support that, but I understand the problem with BATs, because I understand there's lots of BATs further up, so it may have to be done in stages rather than do it all at once in this plan. So I support both the points raised by the speakers, Chair, but I'd like a bit more just how flexible this is after we've agreed it.
Vicky, we have a question to take.
Thank you Chair. I just really wanted to reinforce what I think has already been said and what's already in the report, that today you're sat here as the local planning authority making decisions on the planning application. And there is obviously some discussion now that, where people are quite reasonably considering that, you know, have they potentially got sort of an applicant sort of hat on too? And the answer to that is no. You are the local planning authority making decisions on a planning application. If, as in your role as councillors, you want to go and have further discussions afterwards in terms of what the applicant is doing, whether they want to put in a different planning application as well, or a revised one of this, or whatever, is something that you can do outside of this room. But at the moment, you are sat as a local planning authority making the planning decision on this application as it stands. Thank you.
Thank you, Vicky.
Would be okay, I think you're asking exactly what you've been asked to consider here. And so it's a full application for the public realm with certain details reserved by planning conditions. So the area outside the green line, it's a full application, so that includes levels, hards off landscape etcetera. However, condition 12 of the report reserves approval of a deculverting method statement, which would provide scope. So that is for, unfortunately I haven't got the plan in front of me, but there's a constraints plan that shows the culverted water course and then riparian buffers are adjacent to it and has that as a water course. And so condition 12 in the report, you'll see refers to a water course zone, which includes the water course on this buffer and basically says that nothing can happen in that area until a deculverting method statement's been submitted. And that essentially has to provide full details of proposed works to the banks and bed of the water course other than respect to fish pass, which is out within condition 13. So if you were to go with the recommendation of approval and permission subject to conditions, then the applicant would still have to submit a deculverting scheme that has details of what they're going to do to the riverbanks and the bed, including the culvert walls. So that two metre wall is an existing wall, it's not a new retaining wall. But so the proposal is to lower it by up to three metres, leave a two metre section and put a balustrade along the top and a walkway. That could change through discharge of condition 12 if the applicant, the further work the applicant does, upon reflection, they decide to take a slightly different approach to that area. So I hope that clarifies.
But aren't we the applicant?
But we, well, so I think you have to not think of yourself as the applicant. The local planning, the council are both applicant and regulator. You're sitting here today as land use regulator. So you are considering, and that is the way the system works, there's no option for the council to hand the application to a different authority to determine. So you have to put yourself in the line of regulator and consider whether the application before you is an acceptable development scheme or an unacceptable development scheme irrespective of who the applicant is, against the relevant policy framework.
Still think same. I mean, books stops here, don't it? Whatever we decide will be it. And if it says, there's going to be a bloody wall there.
I have Bernard, then you Mike.
Thank you Chair. I think Simon produced a well thought-through plan on how it's possible to fund this and that approving what we're talking about here today, using the reserve matter facility in the planning process, that that's the way forward. So we don't need to make the decision, cancel the price today about it being a tall wall or that's not, you know, we have, there isn't way through. One general point, I'm very concerned about, I feel that there's been a lost opportunity here. We're underselling the castle, which is, that castle was the largest medieval castle in the north of England. And, you know, we were a considerable force at that time. It was the economic centre of this region and I think that's something we should celebrate. And I'm rather underwhelmed by what we see here. I know subsequently, we may be able to big that up, but please, you know, consider that because it is hugely exciting. We have, well, we've had the largest archaeology department in Western Europe, which ever university...
Bernard, is there a question in there please?
Sorry?
Do you have a question there please?
Well, will you be, no, sell the idea that this is, this is a major, major feature of the city? Will you be doing this in future?
Would like to answer that one.
Mike? So just to confirm again, we are here as planning officers assessing a planning application and the scheme before us, that there is, as I've explained, there is an element of exposing and celebrating the castle remains within the development project. And that's the most substantial castle remains, which is the gatehouse, the gatehouse remains and the drawbridge pier. So they'd be presented in a new public realm, freely open to the public to sit and appreciate. So that is an element that is within the application. So just to clarify that, again, in terms of whether they could be more done, that's not really what we're here to assess, we're here to assess whether the application is acceptable. And the relevant policy framework is essentially about harm to heritage assets, which the below ground remains are. And archaeologists, first principle generally is to keep things buried and preserve them. It's always more problematic to expose them because then you have to potentially consolidate them, protect them, manage them in the future. However, the archaeologists have accepted the exposure of the gatehouse remains in this instance. Once they've been exposed, they don't know precisely how far those remains go, they would have to be, they're listed buildings, so they'd have to be listed building consent for the consolidation of the remains, so they couldn't just be left as in their current condition, because they deteriorate through weather and over time, there'd have to be some element of potentially capping and making good. And then they would be left managed in the long term. So that's the proposal before you, so it does include quite a substantial element of exposure and celebration of the remains in planning officers' view. Obviously the committee may have different views on the matter.
I'm going back to my initial point. Do you agree that further discussions can be done while approving the overall hybrid application? Because there are reserve matters that will deal with these other conservation type issues that we've been discussing, like deculverting.
Mike? If I may, Chair, so in the supporting information, you'll see the condition 16, which is a slightly reworded version of the condition that's already in the report. So that essentially reserves final approval of the area, the gatehouse courtyard, they're calling it. So the area that would expose, celebrate, preserve, the gatehouse area. So the extent of the archaeology that's found and exposed in that area isn't yet fully determined, that bit's variable. The rest of the site is a full application. So the plan that's before you, that was shown on the screen, is the plan that would come forward if it was approved, subject to any variations that the applicant wishes to make.
I'm sorry, but that doesn't really answer my question about, do you agree that further discussions can be done while approving the overall hybrid application? Because the issues around deculverting and etcetera can be considered at a later point, as Simon Ogden put on the table here. He's trying to move things on so that we can approve this and get into the more interesting stuff that was brought together by the contributors today. Thank you.
Bernard, that's not part of this planning application, that is part of the future, if it comes. You know, we're here to look at what's the decultured that is proposed, not what may happen in the future.
But we are the applicant. We are the applicant.
Yeah, but we may be the applicant, but we're the planning committee that makes decisions on that.
So I think, just to move things off, I think as I explained, it's a full application, but condition 12 reserves approval of that deculverting area and it would be possible to change the profile of the bank etcetera. And the applicant has explained that they're actively looking at that option. So if you approve the application today, it wouldn't close the door to the scheme being amended in a manner as similar to what described the object. So that may not occur, but it wouldn't close the door to it.
Thank you very much.
And Mike?
No, we can't.
I'm sorry Simon, we've had your five minutes, this is down now to members' discussions. Well, I'm sorry Simon, but... Well, I'm sorry, Simon, but I can't accept that. You've had your five minutes, and this is now down to members. Mike.
Thank you, Chair. I wonder if you can just take the pictures back? I think it's two to the 3D part of the presentation. Oh, it's a bit further back than I thought. There. Have you got one looking at it from the other? Yeah, that's it. So... I just have a concern that the building next to the part of the river that would remain culverted until we can get more funding, if that building goes in, would that prevent that remaining section from being deculveted?
Michael.
It would depend on the scope of work. So there's currently a five-metre retaining wall there. So this shows the maximum building envelope and height. Anyone building that plot would need to do a structural assessment of that existing side culvert wall to understand what load in the building would put on that. So if you were going to daylight, so there's bracing across the top as well, as well as the culvert lid, so it wouldn't preclude it. I think for a reserve matters application on that site, we'd be expecting a structural survey to demonstrate the impact on the existing retaining wall. As part of that, there would be a discussion about the extent, how that would impact upon the future deculveting. It wouldn't preclude it. Obviously, there's limited width there anyway, so terrestrially down to the river, I think in that location, wouldn't appear to me to be a feasible objective. Anyway, hope that answers your question.
Barbara. So you're pretty much saying that whoever took that plot on has to be prepared for deculveting to take place and put in the appropriate engineering support? So, yeah, so it doesn't rule out deculveting. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Barbara.
Thank you, Chair. I mean, really, I think at this stage, I just want some clarification. I think I've got it. Does it mean we can pass this application as it stands, but it can be revised simply because of the conditions that you've put in? And none of the, none of the sort of features that we're discussing today actually sterilise the site? And I think we used that phrase yesterday. Because I am conscious that sometimes money could come from somewhere which would allow the more innovative stuff to be incorporated into this at short notice. You can always hope, you never know. So is that the correct understanding? But there is another issue as well.
Michael.
I can confirm that's essentially correct. So the concept, effectively by approving the plans before you, you'd be saying the development scheme as proposed is an acceptable development scheme. The conditions would allow that development scheme to be changed in, as far as the conditions allow. That includes the treatment of the culvert and the riverbanks, so that element could be varied, and the applicant has explained that they're actively looking at that element.
Thank you for that. Now for something completely different. Page 112, I mean, and this is curiosity, I don't know if you can actually answer it, for the outline planning. It actually says about South Yorkshire Mural Authority for the transport network. And it says it advises that it will be necessary to alter and improve elements of the existing public transport infrastructure, including bus and tram. Do we actually have any more information about what that would incorporate? And I'm not, I don't think it will influence this application, but it is a statement, and because, you know, active travel, public transport is key to, if you like, to the site, I just wonder if there was more knowledge about it.
So the South Yorkshire Mural Combined Authority provide a consultation response for an attached schedule that specifies the precise improvements that they are hoping can be leveraged from this scheme. So that includes a range of tram and bus stops, the tram network as well. The total cost of that is quite significant, approaching towards a million pounds. So the, I think three-quarters of a million by recollection, I'd need to verify that, that's just approximately. Sorry, that might be a hundred. Yeah, disregard that, please. I'm not precisely sure of the exact amount, but it's a significant amount of money that would be taken to improve all of the bus and tram stops. I don't have that list in front of me, but I can find it if you need that detail. But the approach being taken is essentially, we consider it to be reasonable for the public realm scheme to make the necessary adjustments to the bus stops on Waingate, because for instance, there's a bus shelter immediately opposite where the access would be, so that certainly would have to move. There might need to be some movement of the other bus stops on Waingate. We don't see as the public realm scheme as it really being necessary to make those wider improvements to the bus and tram stops. The South Yorkshire Mural Combined Authority, so you can see the condition before you in the report, I can identify the specific condition if required. Basically says, in phases, there has to be a public transport improvement scheme that's linked to that annex in South Yorkshire Mural Combined Authority's consultation response. We would expect each individual plot developer, based on their floor area, to make a proportionate contribution towards those improvements. But as I say, I can probably pull up the list of specific improvements, but I don't have it to hand.
Yeah, no, it's not that. So basically, sort of, the funding will not come from this part, it will come from the next phase of development and not reliant on it. So that's a bit of a reassurance. Thank you.
Bernard.
Thank you, Chair. My question is, when this project was first proposed, we were told the governance would be transparent and collaborative, and this process would be hand in glove. I, the public, and the council, and the officers, we would be all working together in a transparent and collaborative way. Is that going ahead and how is that organised? When do they meet, for example?
Okay.
Thank you, Chair. I believe that's a question about what the applicant's doing and how the applicant is running the project. Just to reiterate, we are sitting here as the planning authority determining the planning application. So questions about what the applicant is doing isn't strictly relevant here. So please, can we just try and keep, remind ourselves that we are the planning authority for the purposes of this discussion? Thank you.
But could I be clear? We are the applicant, because we are the council. It seems, yes, I can understand the neat legal nicety you're talking about here, but we, we are, we've been elected to represent the council, and we are the applicant.
But at the moment, we're the planning committee that's sitting to decide whether this is approved or not approved, irrespective of Sheffield City Council being the applicant. This is, you know, we are separate to that. I think that's the easiest way of saying it, we are separate to Sheffield City Council being the applicant. Is that right?
Yes, we are the local planning authority determining a planning application that's being made by an applicant. That applicant is the council. There's obviously, you know, a team, a project team within the council that has worked with the stakeholders to bring this application forward. But for the purposes of this meeting, you're sitting as the planning authority. And if you've got any questions about how the council is acting as applicant, then there are discussions outside this meeting of the planning committee.
So when can that meeting be held?
I think when you want to make it.
As soon as possible, please.
But that would be you personally.
Sorry?
That would be you personally.
Well, and if the councils want to meet and discuss governance of this project, I think that would be good, because I want to involve lots of other people in, as in the spirit of the committee system that the council just adopted.
Vicky.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, just to sort of reiterate some points, yes, the council is now operating under a committee system, and they are the policy committees. I believe it's probably the TRC committee that would be the committee where you might want to sort of discuss about regeneration and certainly transport. But this is a regulatory committee of the planning committee. This has existed prior to the change to the committee system, because this is how planning applications are determined. So please don't conflate the two in terms of a committee system. The Chair's right in terms of, if you as councillors want to go and make some investigations to how the application is coming forward from the council as the applicant, please feel free to do so. You're perfectly within your rights to ask those questions and to find out what the governance arrangements are in terms of the applicant acting as the applicant. For purposes of this meeting, we're looking at the planning application, we're determining it based on the development plan and any material considerations. In terms of what the applicant is doing, in the same way as any other application, it's just a different matter. And applications are done in an applicant-blind way, doesn't matter if it's Mr Smith or the council. This is a planning application, you are the planning committee determining that in accordance with the legislation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any further questions? Yeah, go to comments, yeah?
First of all, I would like to thank those people that have been involved in the planning and also the speakers today, because there's been a lot that's been well thought through. And we know that there's an engineering problem with some of these aspects that have been brought to the fore. What really I am concerned with is that this is something that will produce a lot more good for the city, not just in biodiversity, but it is a conduit to develop that area. If you stand and look at Exchange Street, it's a mess. It really is. It looks awful. And thanks for nodding in agreement. And if this were to go through, and I'm sure, subject to some flexibility that we've, that's been expressed today, those buildings, I'm sure, will improve. Because if they don't, then the whole, the whole plan of this, of the city will not develop in the way that we would wish. Because we are trying to regenerate that area, and I'm sure that people would see the benefits of regeneration, and that is, that is the conduit of it. And I think the castle, such as we've got now, yeah. And we can, you can, we can have a visitor's centre, all sorts of other things in time. But we're looking at what is proposed there, and, you know, all the other things that were mentioned here as well about the culverts and so on. So I am going to, I'm going to vote in favour of the officers' recommendation.
You've had your time. I'm sorry, Anthony, you've had your time.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I mean, I've not spoken so far, so I'm going to have my two penneth. I must say, I just love this proposal as it stands. I think with the, with the additions that the objectors bring, I think it will be even, even better. I will certainly be voting for this and hope that they can, that those involved in the development will be able to incorporate what the objectors have raised.
Mike.
Thank you, Chair. And like Roger, I'm also thanking the officers. There've been a lot of loose ends to tie up with this development. It has, this space has lain vacant for eight years, and in that time, there have been consultations taking place to get residents and other people in Sheffield to get their views. And I'm sure if you do enough digging, you will find them as a matter of record somewhere in our archives. But it is important that we open up spaces closer to our city centre. We've got a lot of green spaces around the outskirts of the city and out in our suburbs. But when you get into the city centre, until, apart from the Peace Gardens and now Pounds Park and Devonshire Green and the little green space at Fitz Allen Square, there aren't many green spaces within the city centre itself. And I welcome this development and the way that it ties in with the greater green work that's being done on our roads, leading out, leading out of the city. I do have concerns about the height, the height between the opened-up culvert and the green space above. And would note that only 100 to 150 yards away, the River Don at Nursery Street, you have a pocket park there, and the, it does go almost down to the river. There's only a couple of feet, I think, if memory serves, between the bottom of the Pocket Park and the River Don there. And the River Don, of course, is a much wider river. But it's also a landmark that we are opening up the sheaf at its joining of the River Don, which pretty much marks the spot which is the centre of Sheffield. Thank you, Chair.
Pete.
Yeah, just to follow that, Chair. I mean, it's another piece in the jigsaw, isn't it? I mean, I came on the bike yesterday along Blom Street, and it was magnificent at the end with all the greenery and the little market that was taking place on Castle Gate. Then you've got the square, Fitz Allen Square, and this links it together, and it'll be a real brilliant, I mean, apart from the wall, I hope we can sort it out and get it more of a banking. But I think it's a tremendous development, Chair, and it's going to really lift up that part of the city. Hopefully, they can get the town hall, old town hall sorted out soon, because it's listed in that area. Because there's a lot of apartments going up just behind that, so the footfall will increase tremendously in the next five years. So I welcome it, Chair, I just hope we can sort that banking out and sort of support the officer's recommendation.
Tony.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Yeah, I know we're here to make a decision on what's in front of us and take it into consideration what the people here have said would be a great idea to have that incorporated into it. Obviously, that's not going to, that's not going to be in this part of this application, but taking on board that probably at a later date, this could, this could happen. I think it's a great development, or it will be a great development when it's complete, something that we need in the city centre, and I will be fully supporting the officer's recommendation. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Tony. Anyone else? No? I think we'll move to the vote now, so go round, what is the turn? Mike?
For the recommendations, Chair.
Peter?
For the recommendations.
Tony?
For the recommendations, Chair.
Roger?
For the recommendations.
Barbara?
For the recommendations.
Cliff?
For the recommendations, Chair.
Bernard?
For the recommendations, Chair.
That is past you now, that's all. Thank you very much. And that concludes that item. Yeah. Item 11, recorded planning appeals submissions and decisions. Anything to bring? You don't know?
Nothing to add, Chair. All the delegated decisions based appeals were dismissed by the inspector.
Thank you. Can we take that as noted? Mike?
I do think we should compliment the officers in getting a clear run of dismissed appeals. And I see nods from the other side of the room, so thank you.
Yeah, I did say that Michael, it was a very prolonged index presentation, and I suppose it's the longest you've ever done, isn't it? You think so? I wasn't here for that. Yes, I'll extend the thanks from the Chair. Thank you. That concludes today's meeting. Thank you very much, members.